I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
President.
Commissioner Banky.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz. Commissioner Roberts.
Sorry, present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All commissioners present with the exception of Commissioner Schwartz.
May I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Schwartz?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes.
May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Port.
We have a motion from Commissioner Banky with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, we will have public comment regarding items on the agenda. We will start inside the city chambers first, and when we have exhausted all public comment within the chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and place of residence. We will begin inside the chambers now.
I'm Ernest, resident of the United States. For one, it's on agenda, but don't matter.
Yes, if it's not on the agenda, you can do public comment at the end.
Oh, yeah.
There is public comment at the end, too.
All right.
Yep. Hearing no public comment for items on the agenda, we will now open it up to the Zoom participants. Hearing no public comment for the Zoom participants for items on the agenda, we will move on to the informational discussion topics. And first up is the cell phone tower request. I will turn it over to our acting city administrator, Vince Emmerich.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe online with us tonight, we have Utilities Director Sadler to talk about this proposal that we received.
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you, Will.
Yep, so, real quick, it's several weeks ago, I had somebody contact me representing a company that builds cell towers, telecommunications towers, and they locate areas that they're interested in building. And in this case, they're interested in building one right near in the front yard area of the water treatment plant. The first thing they do is they they kind of go around and look for the areas that they think would work well for them. And in this case, that area jumped out at them. They would need about five thousand square feet of space, if I remember correctly. And they would build the tower and then they lease space on the tower to telecommunications providers. And in this particular case, I've heard that Verizon, they've told me that Verizon has already contacted them about potentially putting their equipment on the tower. So I'm just curious to know if you're even interested in allowing that. The first thing they do is they they get a lease agreement together. And in this case, it looks like what they would do is offer a hundred and twenty thousand dollars upfront for a fifty-five, five-zero year easement or lease on that space. Or they would pay, starting out, six hundred dollars a month for a five-year lease. And then they would have options to do nine more five-year leases. And every year, they would increase amount by one and a half percent per month. So obviously, if you felt they were going to be there for a long term, that would probably be the way to go. But I would just more looking for guidance from you on on if you're even interested in allowing that to happen.
Well, if at any time that they decide that they are, you know, they're not going to do this lease anymore, is there something in what they've provided saying that they will deconstruct the cell phone towers so that we're not stuck with it if that were to happen?
Yeah, that's my understanding, but I haven't seen the lease yet, so I would know. We would have to review that pretty carefully.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And Will, just to clarify, this would be off of Bent Oak, the property there?
Yes, yeah, they're looking at the front yard, probably like the north. The north side of the front yard where that second drive is is where people can go in and go fishing back there.
And do you foresee any future construction needs within that area? I'm assuming not, since you're bringing it to us, but any future construction taking place on the site up front?
No, I don't see anything. We have to make sure. I know that we do have a transition main, a transmission main that comes out the front there and diagonals off in that direction, so we were gonna have to make sure that we locate that and make sure we know where everything is underground. Sometimes you don't really even know until you start digging and finding stuff, but I don't see any anything that's going to be constructed there. And I've already talked to Tim, the superintendent, and he agrees.
And do we have any other lease agreements with cell phone towers or more particularly this company?
Nothing that I'm aware of.
Do you happen to know as well, Will, if there's anything, I mean, have you been in any discussion with them after they reached out to you? The reason I'm asking is wondering, I know I've seen cell phone towers that can be disguised a little bit more with greenery. And I just, my only fear is that is a very nice green space when you go by, and then to see a really ugly structure right there of a cell phone tower.
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
And I wonder if there's any way of them just disguising it a little bit better. I've seen that done other areas.
I have not had too many, just really, it was just an initial meet and greet type situation where he kind of went through the process of how they approach it. They always want to identify the space, then then get a lease agreement in place, and then it would go through all the proper planning and zoning processes. They'd have to get ahold of FAA to get clearance, because we do have an airport here in the county. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of steps to take after the lease.
Okay, thank you.
I too would be interested in seeing specifically where they want to go with that, because there is a a big chunk of property there, and it might be nice to tuck it back in away somewhere instead of being right up by the road.
Yeah, I agree. They they only want, yeah, they want access from a road and they want access to power, but there's certainly access off the the drive there, so.
From our city attorney's perspective with other municipalities that you represent, any concerns in general with cell phone towers?
No. I mean, we we had a problem back with the county, ten, fifteen years ago. There was a little bit of a argument over who owned what, but the important thing will be to spell it out in the lease.
Yeah, in my understanding, we won't own anything.
I think there's nothing wrong with us investigating. I think we should look at it.
Yeah, I agree. I I think any way that we are approached and can bring in revenue for the city, we need to take a look at it, so I would like for you to pursue it further and see where this could go.
I I agree.
Okay.
Yep, I agree, too. I just would like to possibly look at possibly tucking it away or at least making it greener or somehow disguising it a little bit better.
Yeah, for sure.
Yes.
Yeah, I would want it farther away from the road as well, anyway. So, okay.
How high is that going to be?
I believe he said it was a hundred and eighty feet.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Will.
Yep, thank you.
And moving on, I think our city attorney, is that who's going to talk about Adrian in? No? Okay, okay. Our acting administrator chief, I mean, Vince Emmerich is going to do it. Thanks.
I do, thank you, Mayor. Just just real quickly, there was some back and forth over the sale contract and some language has been determined. We got that middle of the day on Friday, was after the packet had gone out, so we will have that on for you next commission meeting to take a look at it and vote on.
Moving on to our housing help of Lenaway discussion.
Mayor, could we go into closed session to discuss the attorney's opinion about this?
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Castleberry with a second by Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We will go into closed session, and when we are done, we will come right back out and resume our meeting. Thank you. We will now continue our informational discussion topics. Moving on to number four, administrator search, the proposal from Yo and Yo. I'll hand it over to acting city administrator Vince Emmerich.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of your packet, you have the proposed contract from Yo and Yo. There's a resolution this evening to vote to approve or not approve the contract. It's, the contract itself has several add-ons and other features that were mentioned in previous discussions. So we wanted to give space here for you to discuss. And then we could, once we vote on the contract, we can add those features in afterwards.
I think from the itself, I was fine with all the components of it. The interview portion, and I see that Amy Sell is on. Is she able to participate? We have questions directly for them. Or I thought she was.
No, I didn't think she was going to be on this evening.
Okay, I did see her earlier.
Is she? Okay.
Yes, I can.
Okay, my my question was specific to the interviews. I guess I'll seek feedback from my fellow commissioners on the interview piece. Under this plan, with the with the interviews, is it just a come in, they sit down in front of us, we ask the questions, and then at the end of that, we make a decision? Or is there a community meet and greet opportunity for the candidates to interact with the public? And we get a chance to see how they can, you know, act on the fly and interact with people as they ask questions for them in more of a casual type setting? I think it was Luddington that most recently did that as well. So is is that kind of part of this interview, these interview days, Amy?
Yes, there would be panel discussions, tours, a meet and greet, and consolidated feedback from those events that would be provided to the commission.
All right, fantastic. That is perfect. And then just my my feedback on, starting on page six and seven, where it talks about the strategic plan update. I think that was the the feedback that I I was interested in in terms of conversations that and questions that were going to be taking place with the stakeholders, kind of adding those extra questions. And then, most importantly, the second from last item down on the bottom under the strategic plan project management, where there's the eighteen-month period where Yo and Yo facilitates quarterly those touch base meetings and compiles those progress reports for the community and provides coaching for those task leaders. I think that is just critical when it comes to making sure that the work that the commission defines those fifteen goals, items, ten to fifteen priority tasks, as I said, are appropriately project managed, so I I had strong support for that.
One of the things that we had talked about previously, though, too, is simultaneous or in sequence with the the search was developing the evaluation tool so that whoever we end up selecting could act or the candidates would actually be able to see how they were going to be evaluated. So I think that's an important thing to make sure that we're including in the services.
Brought us a evaluation tool in our, it was in the original package she's brought to us.
And I do know that there is some three sixty analysis that was listed there. I see that. But I think the the question becomes, are we comfortable with the tool that was shared the first time? And do we, are we familiar with the three sixty approach? So I think that might be something to further discuss.
I think I'm concerned about the additional costs that would be incurred by the city with all that was offered to us, which it, you know, is nice. I mean, the base fee is nineteen thousand five hundred, correct, Amy?
Correct.
Okay, and then all of the additional things, the strategic plan update, the project management, the competency plan development for the staff, the leadership training, the administrator review, the strategic plan. My notes say now, but I'm not exactly sure what that means. And then the balance of the strategic plan, those are individually costs ranging from fifteen hundred all the way up to fifteen thousand. Is that correct for each individual different one?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So the strategic plan update would cost us an additional sixty-five hundred. The strategic plan project management would be on top of that, another ninety-five hundred. Competency plan development for the staff is another fifty-five hundred. And I'm just listing these out for those of you that didn't delve all the way into page one fifty-three on the on the report. The leadership training would cost another fifteen thousand. The administrator review would cost another fifteen hundred. And I apologize, I don't know exactly what I meant by this. Strategic plan now was another two thousand. The balance of the strategic plan was forty-two fifty. So those are some pretty significant costs to the city.
That was, that was, when we discussed this, when Ms. Lasky put the packet together for us, the binder, those were listed in that binder as extra expenses. I never understood those to be included in the search process. When we discussed Chief Emmerich coming on board as the administrator, that was one of the things that I pointed out that this, the the cost of finding the administrator is A, and all those other extras that we wanted, the cost was B. So I I fully expected those expenses in this contract based on what was in that, the binder.
You expected to pay the additional of all of those costs?
Only if we choose those.
Correct, correct. So I think the only thing I'm comfortable with voting on and voting a yes for tonight is the base fee of nineteen thousand five hundred. I I still I guess I personally would need to know more information, maybe the administrator review, although, you know, we have MMO that could probably provide some of that. There might be other opportunities. I I think the rest of these things are pretty significant costs. And I think we need to to really think about paying for any of these. I'm sure Yo and Yo is, you know, I loved your presentation, very excellent corporation. But let's just start with the base and let's go from there.
I I think part of the feedback that we provided last time, and that's where your two thousand dollars now comes into play, is that we asked them to add and ask additional questions and bake those additional questions into the stakeholder interview. So so part of this is integrated into that component and proposal to move forward with strategic planning, which has been on hold for months at this point.
Yes, we're almost a year into our, the second year of our strategic plan, and it hasn't, we haven't moved toward. I I do think that them working with a new administrator to help with a strategic plan would be important.
I guess one of my questions, and Amy, maybe this is a question for you, but is this something where we could still, we could just do the administrator, sorry, administrator search, you know, add the annual review in so that they can go hand in hand with the administrator's search so they know what they're going to be reviewed on? And then possibly just do that strategic plan update, since we would be able to piggyback on that and get that savings of two thousand dollars basically from that original six thousand two hundred and fifty on that strategic plan update and at least get that much going and then figure out from there where we could go?
We can definitely do that. We can gather all the feedback we need and have the in-person meetings for the extra two thousand. And then we can re-scope out and dive into more details to put together, you know, additional options as well. So I think that's, we can we can definitely be flexible to to try to meet needs for for cost and time.
I would just go back to, I felt that the last strategic plan was done on the cheap, and there wasn't a strategic plan management for it, and I think this is an opportunity to, you know, invest money wisely with a consultant and then to invest in our employees when it comes to leadership training and delivery with our department heads to really bring them together with the new administrator to work on improving their skills so that next go-around, we can learn, our department heads to have skills so that they could replace the city administrator.
So I guess I have a question, you know, maybe you can answer it, Burke. So, you know, it is on here for a, you know, the resolution to, you know, approve an agreement with them. So do we have to have that spelled out tonight exactly what that agreement is, correct?
Yes, and one of the things that I was going to recommend is I would like this subject to final approval of the city attorney. Because what's provided is more of a term sheet than it is a contract. There are things that I want to add in. I don't think it's anything that would break the deal. It's just, I want to be very clear on what you're selecting and that you're getting what you pay for in the contract. So with that being said, I know I participated in an interview with Yo and Yo today. So they're doing services before they have a contract, which is good for them, but I also know that they're trying to stay on schedule for us to complete those interviews on the fourteenth and fifteenth as well.
Well, I believe we can vote to allow our city attorney to go into contract negotiations for specific things like the base fee. And if we want to put in the extra two thousand dollars for the strategic plan questions, then the rest is, the rest of the items are are not on the table at this time, correct?
That is exactly what I was asking for. This would not need to come back before you, once you pick what services you want, then a final document will be created, just those services, and then we can have an addendum with the optional services, and then if you choose to do that at a future meeting, you could do that.
Okay, thank you.
And with regard to the leadership training, I think that's something that we should wait until we have a new administrator and let them participate, whoever that is, participate in the discussion about leadership training.
Alongside.
Yeah, so we have the recruitment costs at nineteen five, right?
Yes.
And then when they're doing the stakeholder questions, getting that input, they will also get strategic plan input. That's sixty-two, six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, it's only two thousand.
Two thousand of that.
For the questions to be.
The balance of it would be four thousand two hundred and fifty.
If we wanted them to continue on with the strategic plan, it would be.
Okay.
So so now we're saying we're gonna pay two thousand dollars, but we're not even going to be sure if we're gonna use those answers? Are we wasting the two thousand dollars?
Well, they would come to us, and we could then choose if we want to use this company to help us with the strategic plan.
I just think we're talking about pennies.
No, well. It's not pennies.
I I do believe that, I'm not sure about the, I would like to negotiate maybe the strategic plan project management, but I do believe that the six thousand two hundred and fifty for a strategic plan update is necessary with the new administrator coming in. So getting the feedback from stakeholders about the administrator, getting the feedback from stakeholders about our strategic plan and implement, rolling that out together, I think, is what will be, that just makes everything smooth moving forward.
I agree. I think that piggybacking, getting a new administrator, moving into strategic plan work is exactly the right time. We should do that.
That was one person I was asking. Go together as that city administrator, that new city administrator comes in. But then, I I agree.
That that project management, you know, is something that we really need to do. But I think that's something after we get the that administrator here, let's let's, as we, let's get into the search. Let's get the search going. That was my opinion. And then let's look at these other things. I think they're all valuable. I think the strategic plan, project management, the leadership training, all of that is very valuable. And but, you know, just to reassess and look at, you know, where our finances are and what is the highest priority and maybe what that city administrator is really focused on and, you know, has that priority as well. But at least get that strategic plan update since we are so far behind. I agree with that. I'm not saying nix it. I just said, put it on hold until we can figure out where we're going. That that was my thought.
Is it something that we can, Mrs. Miss Sell, is it something that we can do, the strategic plan and the administrator, and then once that comes together, we can? I I'm a little confused on the competency plan development. At the, is it, can we, after we pay for the the administrator, we get the strategic plan down and we see what we need outside of your, and there's a competency plan from you, but are we able to process that ourselves? And then say, and with our new administrator and our strategic plan, say, it says we need leadership training, et cetera. Is that something that we could do outside of that, or does that not?
Yes.
Okay.
I do think that.
Effect the streamlining of that, those processes, is that, does it make it a lot more difficult?
Not at all.
Kind of. Sorry, please go ahead.
Um, the the only piece that makes sense to do together is that intake piece. Everything else can be done at different.
Everything else can be done at different points in time. I did want to give you all an understanding of what those. Items, the costs would be, but they can definitely, the timeline, they can definitely be pushed out. All this discussion around timing and makes a lot of sense to me, and I'm very flexible on, on when we would implement different components.
So we, we, I would like to see that. The uh, administrator outreach done and the strategic plan update done together. And allow the city attorney to negotiate that and the city administrator to sign that. Is, does that, so it doesn't have to come back before us and we can keep the momentum moving or not stopping progress that's already happening.
So then when we go through the process of selecting a candidate, we'll say. We may or may not be doing uh, administrative training and we may or may not have. Um, project management for the strategic plan in place.
Correct. We, we don't know who we're going to get. What if they already are, have those, a strong set of skills and those things?
And I think as, we are their client and we are presently at the, will be presently working with them on other components. And we can add things as we go. We are one of the, we are their client.
Well, I understand they're, are, are client, but I, I see this as a form of setting the expectation for our new. Incoming administrator and what tasks uh, they'll be required to do and that will be required to participate in. Having someone project manage the strategic plan and have someone uh, provide leadership training for them and the department heads.
I, I guess I think that's part of their job. Is project management of the strategic plan, making sure all the pieces on the chessboard are moving for the city.
Well, I, and that could be debated on the effectiveness of the last go around.
I, I, I just think that we look for the, look for the opportunity that comes and. Where we, where there are gaps, if, you know, in the interviews, if they say. I'm, I have very strong project management. Um, I could use leadership, you know, leadership training for my team is what, is something that. I, I look forward to having come in, like someone come in and to do that. I think we set that up at that time. We allow our new administrator to choose what is best for the city at that time. We don't know what their strengths will be or their weaknesses, et cetera. And a good administrator will tell you what their strengths are and tell you what their weaknesses, those typically the questions that they get asked.
But then also we'll have some time working with Yo and Yo and um, building our confidence level with them. There may be other groups or organizations that can do leadership training as well, so I agree with Commissioner Castleberry. Let's get it, let's get the administrator in place. And let them participate, as I said before, participate in the decision on how we're gonna do the leadership training. It's gonna be, it's gonna be the administrator staff, uh, that's gonna be trained along with he or she, so um. Anyway, that's where, where, what I'm thinking.
I would agree. We want to move the process, continue to move the process along. I don't want to rush it, but I do want to. Keep moving this process along, and I think this is one of the steps that we can take right now to say, this is, this is the two or three things we want right now. To get, get this thing moving, and I think it's important for us to do that as a group to make a decision and, and make some choices.
So I'm just gonna ask to clarify, so what I'm hearing is. And when we get to that agreement part, I mean, obviously the administrator recruitment, the search process, but also, you know. Thing, because we'll need to specify that, correct? Yes, that's what I thought. You know, is the, what about the annual? Or yes, okay, I'm making sure. And then, and were we saying just to do? That two thousand towards the strategic plan update or actually do the strategic plan update?
I, I think we need to actually do the.
That's my opinion, but I'm just asking what I'm hearing to make sure.
I think so too.
I think it goes hand in hand. I think those set the expectations of what we're looking for. We're getting a bit constituent um, input for that. While we, you know, we're doing the administrator search, we're getting constituent input on that, and we'll get the strategic plan input at the same time. Um, setting up the strategic plan helps um, set the expectations for the new administrator.
I can compromise. I know I didn't want all of that funding, so it looks like it would be twenty seven thousand two hundred and fifty for. The strategic plan plus the administrator review plus the search.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yes.
Um, I mean, my math could be wrong, so.
All right. Are there any other items? Commissioners that you need to discuss for information? All right, hearing none, may I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Councilberry with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yeah.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to our regular agenda, under resolutions, we have resolution R twenty five dash zero twenty eight from the city commission. It is a resolution to appoint April Hammond as city clerk. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support. Are there any commissioner comments or discussion?
Just feedback from the commissioners on the interview committee um. Both, both in support of this and um. April was not the person that was late in applying correctly.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Hearing no more questions or discussion, we have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
No.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution R twenty five dash zero twenty nine is from administration. It is a resolution to approve an agreement with Yo and Yo H R Advisory Solutions. For the administrator search recruitment component, the strategic plan update component and the annual review component. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Mayor, did you say approve or did you say negotiate?
Oh, with, under with, how do you want me to state it? With final approval from our city attorney? May I get a motion to adopt?
Support.
Are there any commissioner comments or discussion on that?
No, thank you, Amy, for working with us and um, sharing more information again.
We have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution R twenty five dash zero thirty is from Engineering Services. It is a resolution to approve an agreement with Consumers Energy for utility relocation at the P O D R Center. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved. Support.
Are there any commissioner comments or discussion on that? We have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to resolution R twenty five dash zero thirty one from administration. It is a resolution to approve an agreement with housing help of Lenaway. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Anna Mayor, I uh, move to table that resolution to our next minute.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Are there any commissioner comments or discussion on this? We have a motion to table resolution R twenty five dash zero thirty one. The motion was from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
No.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Commissioners, there are miscellaneous reports in your packet. Are there any questions or comments on those? At this time, we will now have public comment. This is general public comment. It does not have to relate to what was on the agenda. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time li- limit, and for the record, please state your name and place of residence. We will begin inside the city chambers first. When we have exhausted all public comment with inside the chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants. We will begin now.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Di Francesco. I reside in Gladwin County. Um, I managed, I, I am here on behalf of Medallion Management um, for Riverview Terrace. I managed Riverview Terrace from January of two thousand nine through April of twenty seventeen. I have been asked to come and help um, with this property to uh, lease it up again. So we've had some challenges. Um, some of the challenges being um, that the majority of the units are now fifty percent. Um, instead of sixty percent units. Um, currently we have seventy three. Units available at the fifty percent A M I and ten units available at the sixty percent A M I. Um, there are minimum income requirements to qualify in order to be able to pay um, the rental amounts. Um, for a studio, it is seven twenty eight. For a fifty percent. One bedroom, it is seven eighty, and for a sixty percent, it is eight ninety one for the rental rates. Um, the minimum rental amounts, or the minimum income amounts, I'm sorry, um, to qualify to move in. At this time are twenty three thousand four hundred. Um, for a fifty percent and for a sixty percent unit, twenty six thousand seven thirty. Um, so you can see. With Mishda implementing a lot more of the fifty percents than the sixty percents, the challenges are really out there for us. We are holding open houses. Um, and we are advertising in the Lenaway Voice and on W L E N, um, we have um. A slot coming open for our open house that is coming Thursday, June twelfth from five to seven. We've had one open house thus far and are gonna continue to have open houses every two to three weeks. Um, of every month until we get full. Um, so we are only at about fifty percent occupancy at this time. We have um, flyers uh, uh, to show, um, as well as with the open houses and the advertising. Um, that we are doing, there's also flyers everywhere and signage on the property. Um, so we are working diligently to fill it, but there has been some challenges. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Scott Belts.
Thank you. Do I get three more minutes? Okay.
Just state your name and, and who you're with.
Yeah, my name is Scott Belts and I'm with Medallion Management and I worked with many of you uh, through the process uh, when the building went down. Um, and uh, through the process of getting a pilot approved and a service agreement approved. Um, and I guess I would add, what my ask is um, to take a look at. Uh, not the pilot per se, because it goes based on revenue, but the service agreement that's due, um, I think the end of June. Um, I'm just being honest. I don't know whether we'll have the funds to pay that. Being at fifty percent occupied. Um, the development's not generating enough cash at this point. We just started leasing the end of twenty four. And I think in the ordinance, it gives a little uh, leeway there as to when that service agreements actually would start. So I don't know, maybe that's a question for the city attorney to look at, um, or, or the mayor for that matter. And if I could follow up with somebody and have an open dialogue, um, I just don't wanna not be able to pay it and say, I don't know. You know, I'm just being open and honest with the, with the council. So, thank you. Oh, the other thing is, if it helps or if it doesn't help, um, we also went to Mishda and they um. Uh, kicked our mortgage, so we don't have a mortgage due until January first on the development, so they're. Because of where it's at with the fifty percent occupancy, so thank you.
Tom Fall, Haber, four nineteen Budlong Street. Uh, the city's doing a lot of things that are really good, that really are worthy of uh, emulation by other communities, but. I'm very concerned about some big issues here. Number one, um. The water issue here. I don't know what's being done around here, but this is, this water is worse than you'd see in some third world nations, and I've been there. I taste the water in third world, third world nations. This is terrible. I'm not saying it's not safe, but it, the smell and the taste is horrible. There's a competition for worse municipal water. We'd be in the thick of it, I guarantee it. And uh. Um, we're in the process of searching for a city administrator and I, I still like the idea of Chief Emrich. I, I, I think he'd be an outstanding pick and I don't know. But it is what it is and. Um, other problem is the marijuana odors, and I hear about this because I was a city commissioner when the marijuana. Was approved in this city in twenty seventeen, eighteen, whatever it was. And uh, people come out to me, you, you know, you guys brought that in here and the, the deal when they came in here was that the odors would be contained within the facilities. I'm not sure all the odors I smell around the city are from the facilities because um. I don't use the stuff, but I'll tell you what, I think even people, somebody sitting on the corner smoking, it's much more potent than it was many years ago and. And uh, that's an issue and then. Another problem is the blight issue here. It's, to me, it's getting worse. We're not doing a good job with, with code enforcement here. It's disgusting. I got a place up the street from my apartment building. It's just absolutely unbelievable. Some of the stuff I see around here. And about seven, eight years ago, I went around the entire city. It took us weeks to do it myself and a, a gentleman from a prominent. Family in this city. We found seven hundred and some properties that had readily apparent. Uh, exterior issues. We had like a two or three second rule. We didn't see something in a couple of seconds, we moved on. It was a laborious task. He drove, I wrote, and. A, a former commissioner was just, was just talking to him. He said he did the same thing with the same gentleman. They found nine hundred and some, so. I don't know how scientific a comparison that is, but that's an ongoing issue here and we're tearing down houses and people seem happy about it and. We're losing our population base and thus, thus our revenue base, and we've got to do something to stop the. The decline of our housing stock here. It's, it's getting worse, I think. We're not getting the job done with the people we've got in this uh. Code enforcement area. I'm not seeing, there, there's, there's a couple of good people there that I've talked to and I deal with, but I'm on the phone all the time with these people. So I'm tired of it. I got a lot of money invested in this town. I'll be darned if I'm gonna sit here and watch it all wither away because the city's declining. With its housing stock and there's a lot of good people here. They're keeping their homes up nice. They don't deserve this. They're losing value on their homes because of the people around them, so. I just ask if something be done. First of all, about the water, that's the most pressing issue we've got right now and. I wonder what's being done. I hear nothing about it, but I'm not in the inner sanctums anymore in government, so I don't know. There might be a lot going on. I don't realize, but. I hope something is done about it, because you get a, two or three finalists to come here and their families come, they drink the water. Man, that was, that's a bad impression, so. And the other things I mentioned, so thank you.
Keith Miller, City of Adrian. As far as taxpayers around here, I'm sure they don't like to be lied to from the city council. And I have it here in writing from the Lenaway Voice. You guys told us it was eight hundred thousand dollars to tear down the Adrian Inn and get rid of it, asbestos abatement and the cleaning. It comes up to two hundred and twenty six thousand dollars and some change. So we sold a million dollars worth of property for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Sounds fair to me. I mean, the only people that got stroked here was the city taxpayers. And as far as Riverview Terrace. I think you guys owe us a million dollars before you ask for anything else from us. We're the ones that paid for that building just to keep your residents in the city that you guys didn't take care of your buildings. It's your fault that we're in this big problem. But nobody wants to put the finger to the, who's ever, who's ever caused this problem. If you guys had have took care of your property.
Address the commission. Not them.
All right, if they'd have took care of their property, we wouldn't be in this problem. And as far as that backroom meeting, every time you guys go into a backroom meeting, us citizens, us taxpayers, take it. You went into a backroom meeting a few months ago, give a guy $125,000 for a property that you already paid him $75,000 for. What did it cost us when you went back there tonight? I didn't see anybody bring it up that what you, that housing help was going to cost us. Is it an embarrassment that you're not going to tell us what it cost? That money's not your money. It's our money. And this address. The elephant in the room. Commissioner Schwartz has not been here in months. I realize he's sick. But he's not doing the constituents that voted for him any good by not being here. Somebody needs to fill that seat. To take his place. I don't care if you find somebody temporary, but that vacant seat right there is a vote that the citizens are not getting. You might not agree with me, you might agree with me, but that's how I feel. Thank you.
Hearing, hearing no more public comment inside the city chambers, we will now open it up to the Zoom participants.
I, I'd like to speak real quick. Jared Tim, Adrian resident. First, I'd like to thank Ben Summerick and Bob Banky for responding to the email that I sent you guys. Last week about the demolition of U Park. And I would just like to make a really quick publicly to stop. Pause whatever you have to do, the destruction of U Park until the. The concerns that I raised via email. Are addressed. And, and, and we can get to the bottom of whether or not, you know, due diligence was taken before. A, a park was stripped from the public without so much as a public comment. Thank you.
Hearing, hearing no more public comment, we will move on to the commissioner comments. I would like, oh, I'm sorry, I would like to begin and just acknowledge that we have lost several citizens recently. In Adrian that, you know, did a lot for our community, one being Dick Duran, which was the former sheriff. But also Dorothy Schmidt, she, you know, came diligently to our meetings, cared a lot about our community, was a big activist here and. Just did a lot for the community and, you know, was an active part of our city commission meetings and it, it's a very large loss. You know, losing these community members and just what they, their value and what they do bring and. Even though sometimes it might have been controversial, you know, topics, at least, you know, it was keeping us on our toes and it was bringing light to problems that were in our community. And I just want to acknowledge, acknowledge them. I also want to just. Bring up that today I was able to attend the. Sergeant, Staff Sergeant Ralph Moyers. Memorial that happened at Oakwood Cemetery and just really thank. Our Parks and Recreation Department, they came out in full force today. To honor and just what the cemetery did to also, you know, really make it a very special moment. If you don't know the story, it is. It has been posted around town, but it was through Waggly Funeral Home that did do the obituary, but. There were remains of a World War Two. A person that was shot down in Germany, those remains had never been found, even though they knew that they were shot down in Germany. That family knew that, that he had perished. They were just identified recently and. He, his son is buried at Oakwood Cemetery, so it was decided to bring the remains to Lion State here at Oakwood Cemetery and. Just to see the show of veterans that came out today, but like I said, just the Parks and Recreation Department and, and it was just an amazing day. It was. You know, it was just amazing to know that somebody had been found this many years later, those remains and that they were identified, but. What an honor and privilege that, you know, it was chosen for, for him to be laid at rest in Oakwood Cemetery next to his son. So I just want to. Bring that to light and that was a very great day and thank you to our, especially to our cemetery department for what they did.
I have several items tonight as usual. So on Saturday, we had the Habitat for Humanity pickleball tournament. Out at Heritage Park, I'd like to thank Jeremiah Davies for coming out and making sure that everything was okay with the tournament. The funds raised from that tournament goes direct, go directly back to City of Adrian residents to help with. Projects in their homes. So please, if you have need and you meet the income requirements or you're not even sure, just please reach out to Habitat because they do have funds to help. With things like ramps and, and roofs and plumbing and all of that stuff. Also, we had some really interesting things happen on Saturday with our new community garden down on George Street. That was also a big assist from Braxton. Garza, Braxton Garza, who created the raised garden beds from our Parks and Rec. Jeremiah was instrumental in that. Our Parks and Rec Department was, you know, a big part of that and we really appreciate it. We also had our first session of yoga and yoga in the park. So I could not attend that even though I wanted to, since I was at the pickleball tournament, but it will be taking place at a different park each month. So please check the city Parks and Rec Department website and Facebook for the next yoga in the park. So great ideas. Moving forward with all those things. Then on Sunday, we had the erase the stigma, Greg Adams erased the stigma race. We had 600 registrants, which is more than we've had. I believe since COVID, so that was wonderful. Like to thank Jay and his assistance with getting the farmer's market ready for us. The Adrian Police Department reserves that came and helped with traffic control. It was a great morning for a race and everyone had a wonderful time. Funds for that obviously go to Community Mental Health, which helps support all the programs within the City of Adrian and the county. On Thursday, we had our first, third Thursday's evening, I came down for a gentleman. I didn't get to hear the lady singing at, at the Four Corners, but we had a gentleman singing. We had this. Section closed off. We had a bunch of food trucks. It, it wasn't especially well attended, but it being the first time, I thought it was a good shot and we're going to continue doing that in DDA. So, good job, Kate. Hope, we're looking forward to our next one. There are various items I placed on the stand. One is if you're interested in the Bicentennial 5K Run One Mile Walk, you can take this with QR code to get registered. It's only $5. Please consider registering. It's all on the Kiwanis Trail. So that will be, those are up there with other things. If you had a chance to review the packet, one of the things in there from Will Sadler, our wastewater treatment plant director. No, that's not his title. I can't think of his title. Thank you. Utilities Director, he gave us pictures. Of outside and inside the water tank like I've never seen before. And so I, I was just, I thought they were really cool. If you find those. Things interesting and geek out on it, take a look at the packet. They're, they're in there. It shows things that, that need to be looked at and a lot of things that don't need to be looked at. So that was really cool. I'd like to hear from Mr. Castleberry. I believe I heard earlier, just in passing, you have a number of code enforcement hearings. Coming up, could you tell us how many, approximately how many hearings you have in a week, in a month?
Last month, we had, it was either 61 or 63. And tomorrow. They've double booked district court, so the City of Adrian has hearings from one o'clock to 4:30 all in both courts, all afternoon.
So we are writing the tickets. We.
A lot of tickets.
There are a lot of tickets. There are a lot of tickets. And we are taking them to court for those people that are not. Doing what they need to do to be good neighbors. And we are doing our due diligence as best as we can. So I'm going to leave that there. The last thing I would like to. Welcome and thank April for your willingness to step forward. April's been a several year member of the City of Adrian. I'm sorry if I was going, if you were going to be doing this or not. Okay. I was on the committee to interview. She was also a member of the Raisin Township. Clerk office for many, many years and brings good, very, very organized, very good customer service skills and organizational skills. And I look forward to working more closely with you.
May I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.